I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting West Burlington City Councilor Holder. Roll call please.
Crowner.
Here.
Rowley.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Lee's.
I made it.
Wes.
Here.
Any to effect and approve the agenda?
Well, so moved.
Support.
Most with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Carrie, consent agenda.
Before we move on, I'd like to, number five, talk about it for a second.
Do the finding, or under public safety.
Approve is amended.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Down was the approved consent agenda items, one through seven, with taking five off, and would have been the minutes of regular city council meeting on September 19th. Approved the finance off settlers attendance at the union negotiation training. Approved parade job for Red Ribbon Parade, which will be October 24th at 2:30. It starts at the elementary school. Everybody's invited to participate. Approved liquor license renewal for Broadway. Approved the Pope's monthly financial report for August 2012. And approved the claims in the amount of $63,527.29. And that breaks down to general use, general fund, $43,644.22. Road use, $3,526.60. Local option sales tax, $554. Tiff Capital Projects, $3,353.51. 2011 general obligation bond, $1,337. Water, $5,366.46. Sewer, $3,870.21. Medical insurance they serve, $840.46. Flex account, $120.85. Trusting agencies, $55. Fourth of July celebration, $540.70. And a Pink Wheels tour, $317.98. Good committee reports. Any else?
Not really, except I had talked to Gifford a little bit during the week about the school situation, and, but he kinda got back to us and updated us on where that was. I just thought we should be trying to move along on that if we could, and I don't know if you have any more, Dan, since your last-
Yeah, I don't know. I kinda wanna get a little bit of direction. I know one of the things I was, ideas I had is if we put, getting rid of some of the salvage stuff that everybody seems to be after us for, if we could add that as a bid alternate, we'll know about what that money is, whether we can accept it or not, 'cause we'll have, we'll have a bid without it and a bid with it, and we should be able to see the difference and see what kinda money that is. And that would take us out of trying to figure out how to fairly, how to fairly make sure everybody, 'cause like those bleachers, I think four, three or four different people like those, and, I mean, I don't know. But I'm just kinda, you know, that takes us out of the loop, but if we wanna be in the loop, then that's fine too, but I just kinda wanted some direction for the council, how you all felt about that. I know that's kinda what the city of Burlington did, I know it's different on that Murray Turbo building, but they tore that down with salvage. It didn't cost them anything to tear it down, all they got was the salvage. And I'm certain there's a lot more metal in that than in a school, but.
The only thing I've had anybody ask me about is them bleachers and a couple indoor interior doors. But I don't know what all the schools still gonna leave there when they-
Everything that's there right now, the school's leaving, except for the paperwork.
Did they take down those basketball hoops?
Think so.
That's another thing then.
There's a lot of stuff in there that we're gonna run into problems, unless we decide, like Dan said, to let whoever demos it give us a price, or you're gonna have to figure out how you're gonna do it, 'cause there's some boilers in the basement that people are interested in, the air conditioners outside, or in the gym. Mayor.
But on the other hand, if I have taxpayers wanting to buy that stuff, I hate to not give them the opportunity to do so.
Which is why I wanna talk about-
And I don't know why it can't be open, and I'm just saying, not meaning this, but next Wednesday night at 5 o'clock, and if you're interested, something coming, and, okay, who'll give me how much for that, and you're done.
I don't know why we couldn't do something-
Yeah, that would be one way to do it. I, you know, we're supposed to sell stuff for fair market value. That, some of that stuff, you know, doesn't have much-
Highest price today is fair market value.
Yeah.
Highest price somebody's willing to pay today is fair market value.
That's one way to do it, yeah.
Exactly what every auction in the world is about, and, you know. I just hate to not, you know, I've got a taxpayer that wants those bleachers, I've got a church that wants those bleachers, I've got a taxpayer that would like to buy a couple interior doors. Now, I understand if we get into selling floors, and they gotta tear our floors and stuff, that sounds a little crazy, but some of that stuff doesn't seem like it'd be that big of a deal.
And that boiler, I think we'll put that on gov deals, just, because it's-
Trying to sell exterior doors and exterior windows that would get us into, you know, or something, but I just, I don't know. I'll do whatever y'all wanna do. I just, I just would like for us to make some decisions so that we can have some answers for these people. As I told you in my little memo, I just am tired of people asking me and not being able to tell them anything.
One of the former teachers wants a bookcase out of his old room. That stuff I don't see much of a problem with, 'cause it really doesn't have much value to anybody else but him.
And it's not gonna have much value towards the person tearing down the building. They're gonna be interested in metal. They're gonna be interested in iron, is what they're gonna be wanting, you know.
What can you do asylum auction?
Good.
You almost have to have an open house, like Rod said, though, 'cause people don't know what's in there until they go in and look. I mean, I don't know everything that's in there, and I don't think anybody does it this-
I haven't been back in for a while.
Yeah, Rick probably knows what's in there all over, but.
Well, let's put him in charge.
We've got so many different people wanting so many different things, and organizations that are wanting things, and I think the best way is just to get two bids, one with salvage, the other one without. That way you're not gonna, I mean, you're gonna make them all mad anyway, but the ones that are wanting stuff, they can go to whoever's tearing it down.
Let them deal with it.
Let them deal with it.
Mayor, I like that idea.
Stay out of it. I've had the same people approach, you know, got the historical society wanting to look at the wood, the door frames inside, and teachers that are wanting old bookshelves, and people wanting placards off the side, and who knows what. I think the only thing we ever agreed on to actually take off of that building was those two, was that Learning is Life thing, and the book-
That open book thing.
Open book on the other end.
And I'm not sure how we're even gonna get that open book thing off. I'm not sure if that's even possible. I don't know anything about that. I never heard that one. I heard the Learning for Life, but I've never heard anybody know- Yeah, they pulled that at the last minute, right, like the closing, and I was like, "Yeah, if it's possible, then we'll try," but.
Well, they're paying for it, so.
Yeah.
What are they gonna do with it?
Well, they make benches out of it or something.
I think that what you mentioned there, good idea.
Just put it on the agenda for the next time, and make a decision or something, have a vote, and go from there.
Yeah.
Good.
Other than that, I have nothing under the finance.
I have anything for finance. Streets. Rick?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything tonight.
Dan?
I do not, Rick.
Are they, did they, I drove by there about 4 o'clock when them guys were done. Didn't look, all I seen was cones. Have they set out anything else, Randy?
They were putting plywood underneath the cones to cover up their potholes where they were finding utilities, and they were still working yet tonight when I came in for the meeting, so.
Looked like they were almost finished on Broadway.
Yeah, they were making the turn, going down Long Meadow, and they actually were up here at the corner of Swan and Mount Pleasant, working back to the south. I talked to them today, and they were gonna, they were gonna do a better job tonight than they did yesterday.
Anything else for streets?
I would only mention that I appreciate Randy and his guys going and fixing that last night after I talked to you guys about that, 'cause that was just an accident waiting to happen.
Public safety. Trace?
Um, the only thing I have is that maybe the guys that patrol on nights, Frank, if they could make a list of the streetlights that are out again.
I can do that. I'll get them started on that.
It's pretty dark in some of those sections.
Yeah.
My wife called about one, and that was 20 days ago, and they said they'll do it in five.
Is it done?
No.
We can add more to the list.
I said, "Add the other." It was 20 days ago, so she called. They said they have it in five.
Okay. I get that. The only thing I have is Officer Grobert has graduated from DARE. He did his two weeks, and he's now coming in a lot on the school days, as much as he can, from 8 o'clock to 4 o'clock, so he's there when school starts and school gets out, and he spends a lot of times in that area besides doing the regular patrol. Squad three that was involved in the fire, insurance company picked up today, so that's gone. We pretty much settled everything. We got somewhere in the neighborhood at $24,000 for both the squad car and contents, so that should be all wrapped up, and that's about all I have.
You got Mike?
Okay, on buildings. Hospital and Ortho Rehab, the new addition. They're moving utilities, starting on the footings in the basement. Received a second set of prints this week to review with all the changes that I found that needed to be done. Basically, the new set of drawings went from about 40 pages to about 70 pages. Dairy Brothers demos completed in the showroom. They're starting the footings, and a new driveway on the south side's continuing. Klein Center, all different phases of completion. Section C, which is the all-timers unit, is about 98% done. All others are about 60% completed. Landscaping's underway. The fire department access road all the way around the building is done, and we're gonna tour it again November the 5th. And we also have nine more change orders with the Klein Center after it's this close to being completed. School multipurpose room, the final was done today and approved. Certificate of occupancy was given to the school district. Still, this week we have received numerous complaints on city ordinance violations all over town, and I'm still dealing with them. And as of today, we have 30 active building permits, including the two at the hospital and Dairy Brothers and Pro Motorsports, some of the bigger ones. Fire Department, Saturday, October the 3rd, from 2 to 7, the fire department's gonna do a fish fry and a chicken fry with an open house. Certification testing was conducted last Saturday. We had 12 members test, waiting on results. They did get through the practicals, so that's a good thing. All they're waiting on now is the written. Received our 1,000 feet of LDH hose for engine two, still waiting to be tested, and the quarterly reports we're putting everybody's mailbox. And tomorrow night, we're gonna be at Farm King for a breast cancer awareness benefit that they're doing, one night, from 5 to 8 at Farm King. PD and fire will both be there, and the hospital, and some other things going on out there, and helping raise money for breast cancer. And we also have participated in the National Night Out last night, along with the PD. We had two pieces of apparatus in the duty chief vehicle down there, and the PD had a vehicle or two down there too, and we were well represented, and that's one thing, on the annual reports, if you see our public relation events, we're turning the corner on it. We're out in the community big time now, and we've got a good committee put together to do these things, and I think it will continue to grow, and that's all I've got.
You said Saturday, October 3rd. I think you meant 13th, isn't it?
13th, I'm sorry, yeah, 13th.
Today's the 3rd.
Yeah, today's the 3rd. I'm sitting here looking at a date.
Was my chicken or fish?
It's the last Saturday of Fire Prevention Week.
Okay. Saturday, October 13th, from-
2 to 7.
2 to 7, at the fire station.
Yep.
Alrighty.
One quick question. Mike, I would think that all this PR stuff would hopefully help with our recruiting, you think or not?
We have, we're getting ready to hire one new female firefighter. She's gone through the ranks and just picked this up since the SAFER grant you guys approved last time, and she's gone through the background checks and the hiring committee and her testing and everything. I'm just waiting for the report to come to the, from the committee, and that's the first one, and I, my projection in the SAFER grant was somewhere between 3 and 5 the first year, so we've got one of three at least ready to go right now. We received a couple other applications, but they didn't make it through the background check, or they didn't make it through the testing process, so we're still looking.
Right. I just, one more thing. I just thinking that, you know, if you're at the National Night Out, and if you're at Farm King, and you're here and you're there, I can't help but that won't, I think that that won't help with recruiting.
And we've got radio spots getting ready to happen. We've got our posters that everybody got copies of, ready, they're in the process of being printed. I'm trying to get a hold of Wolf Decal to do a banner for the fire station, so hopefully we can get all this together before the 13th, and we can start doing a little bit more recruiting that night too.
Alright, thanks.
So how many have we lost this year since?
Firefighters, this year?
Yeah.
Three?
Three, okay.
Okay.
Retirement, between retirements and resignations, three.
I'm number five from the consent agenda.
Oh, I just got a couple questions on it. Dan, was everybody notified to go to the school? Just want a verification on that.
These are posted every month at the station, as we get them from fire service training. This, this one, the inspector, the fire officer two, the instructors one and two, we can't put enough people that need that certification, so we put the posters up at the station every month. When they run out, the runout date, the expiration date runs out, I pull them down. When we get the new ones, I put them back up.
So I just wanna ask, then, this was posted for 30 days?
All of them, they've been posted up there for a month.
A month, 30 days.
Yes.
So everybody, everybody knew about it?
Yes, and you go up there right now, there's a bunch of other ones posted up there right now.
Just wanted to know.
Absolutely.
The only thing I see is there, usually that class lasts till about after you take the test on Friday, and it's done by noon and that stuff in there. Just asking why you're gonna stay one more night, or Mike is?
Depends on when they give the test and how the class runs.
Well, that's why I said usually it's-
Yeah, sometimes the class-
'Cause it only takes two and a half hours. I just wonder why we're paying just that extra night.
Could be that the class is gonna run that extra time, because they have to, they have to do some demonstrations. When you do the test, you also have to do the practical, and to do the practical, you gotta go out and do the inspections, and they've gotta come back and grade them, and that kinda thing, so it's time consuming. It's a practical-
So anybody can go in there and watch?
Any difference?
That's all I got.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion approved.
Support.
Most with support. Any other discussion? Roll the call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Anything else for public safety? Utilities, Carrie?
I don't have anything, Randy.
I don't have anything tonight.
Well, you have anything for utilities? Sanitation?
I don't have anything, Mayor. Randy?
I have nothing tonight.
Yeah, but have anything for sanitation? Other staff reports. Kelly, you got anything going on? Nope. Leslie, you got anything going on?
We had another wellness thing today, a wellness walk. Had seven people participate. Seven people participate in the wellness walk today.
You need a microphone down that way, girl.
You heard me.
I heard you.
That's good.
Those people are probably wondering why there's seven of us walking around 6:30 in the morning, or 7 o'clock in the morning, around the city. Okay, we got proclamation to read. For the Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, 2012. Whereas in October of 1985, federal agent Kiki Camarena was murdered by a drug cartel in Mexico in the line of duty, and friends and neighbors wore red to honor his memory and to show that they would continue his fight against illegal drugs, believing that one person can make a difference, and whereas the problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and the use of illegal drugs have become prevalent in every community regardless of size and location. And whereas National Family Partnership established October 23rd through 31st of every year as America's official Red Ribbon Week for schools and communities to celebrate a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas Grade A-plus in partnership with area businesses and schools have adopted the mission statement to increase the focus of promoting a healthy lifestyle through the collective effort and involvement of all citizens in our community by supporting the non-use of illegal drugs and responsible use of legal substance, thus enhancing the quality of life through a safer community. And therefore, as 2012 marks the 27th year for this nationally recognized substance abuse prevention campaign, we the city council of West Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2012, as Red Ribbon Week in the city of West Burlington, Iowa, and that all citizens shall be encouraged to wear a red ribbon to symbolize our commitment to establishing drug-free communities for our citizens, especially our children, and to participate in events throughout the week that support a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. This time I'll open the floor up to anyone wishing to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda tonight. You have anything? Moving on to old business, none on there, new business? I'm number one, is to consider purchase a dump truck bed for a public works department in the amount of $12,485. It's gonna come from on-road truck equipment.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lee's.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Carried. I'm number two, is to consider purchase of composite sampler for wastewater treatment plant, and the amount of $5,300 from Quality Control Equipment Company.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number three is to consider resolution approving a three-year tax abatement for Valley Distribution Corporation at 215 North Summer Street.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Carried. I'm number four, is to consider purchase of bulletproof vest for the police department. We have 50% local match, $2,508.70 is $1,254.35.
Motion approved. What a heck of a deal.
It's the bulletproof vest that's, uh, that we-
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Now, go ahead.
What a heck of a deal.
I meant to ask you earlier today, the outer carrier, that's something you throw on if you don't have your vest on?
Vest on at the time, correct.
Who's not gonna have their vest on at the time?
At the time? Sometimes when I'm working in the office all day, I won't have my vest on, 'cause they're very uncomfortable, especially if you're sitting in a chair.
So you get a call, you go out and work.
And if I get a high-end call, I can throw that tactical vest on, the outside, and have it on the days that I don't wear the vest. It's just a comfort thing.
Yep.
For when I'm in the office.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Carried. I'm number five, is to consider payment of French Rennick Associates for engineering services, $1,337 for Broadway and Agency Storm Sewer, and $97.50 for a Houston Storm Sewer project.
They're not done, no. They still have money left on that storm sewer project on Agency.
Yeah, that came in way cheaper than what their estimate was, so.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
I don't care who supports.
Rod, or Rick. I heard, it was Rod, I think.
Sorry.
Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number six, is to consider payment of Snyder and Associates for engineering services on the West Lift Station upgrade, $3,256.1.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lee's.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number seven, is to consider purchase of a computer for a fire department in the amount of $1,300, I can't read my own writing now, $33 from F&amp;M Global, and shipping charges could reduce that amount to $1,234. So they're charging what, about 100 bucks for shipping?
39.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's. Aye.
Carried. I'm number eight, is to consider purchase of hazmat equipment for the fire department, spill containment, and Tyvek suits, for the amount of $1,316.50, which comes out of a $5,000 grant.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lee's.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Carried. I'm number nine, is consider purchase of bunker gear for the fire department, one set, in the amount of $1,752.
Well, I'll buy him. Any motion to approve?
Got a motion.
Support.
With support. Any discussion?
Just one bunker gear? Just one set?
We missed it when we did the last set, and when we purchased the last three that just came in about a couple weeks ago.
Uh-huh.
And this one just fell through the cracks and they missed it, and I noticed that when he went to fire school and went through the live burn trailer and things, that some of the protective parts of the bunker gear was falling apart, and it's areas we can't repair, so we need to replace, so. We should've caught it, but we didn't.
Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Rowley.
You looked at me last time, that was the Trans-Canada grant that, that was taken out, this is out of the budget, so you don't have to ask me afterwards, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, vote?
Rowley.
Is that yes?
Yes.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lees. Aye.
West.
Aye.
Carry. I'm number 10, is to set the public hearing date to discuss a loan agreement to borrow funds for a public works building, and the amount not to exceed $3,750,000 for October 17th, two weeks from today.
I'll move.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
What's your carry? Anyone wishing to address council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight? Entertain, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Please move, I don't know who's second.
Oh, so we're, I'll.
You had 6:30.
Everybody's second, everybody.
We're all doing it.
All those in favor.
Bye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.
I'm not complaining.